All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Gracie.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And that brings us to special reports. Dr. Kales.
Okay, obviously, how Mr. Kent addressed the board in new business, but we can do a very special report. So I don't have any special report that has been scheduled, but I figure to get you in and out, Mr. Kent, you attend enough board meetings.
Aye.
I figure we give you the floor for a few minutes of this board.
I appreciate that. Mr. Superintendent, Madam President, and I thank about everybody on the board. I'm Jeff Kent, President of the ESC of the Western Reserve Service Center. And we are the new owners of the Clyde C. Haddon Building on Minter Avenue. And we're here to thank the board and Riverside for the outstanding cooperation that we went through, and I hope you went through, in the purchase of this building. We're going to keep it as an educational facility, which I think will make everyone very happy. It's an iconic building on Route 20. It has been there since, I understand, 1930 or '32. We also purchased the Hale Road Building last year, and that's working out very well. So again, on behalf of the ESC, thank you very much. We look forward to a good long run. On that note, I'm going to leave. I go to enough school board meetings that I know how they go. Thank you very much.
Thank you for talking to you.
Take care.
That's it for special reports. All right, then how about old business? Does anyone else got anything?
I do. I wanted to bring back up the board evaluation that we had talked about, I think, last August, and trying to get something set so we can put something in place to take a look at our, how we are operating as a board.
Okay.
And I brought the information I had emailed to everybody prior. I printed it this time.
Great.
So if anybody would like a copy.
Yeah. Please.
Laurie, did you want to set up a work session for this at some point?
I think that's what we need to do, is to set up a work session. There's an example of a board evaluation there. So it may work for us. But I think we need to have some time to discuss it, to say, does this fit what we're doing or what our goals are?
So our meeting position is pull out calendars and get something going? Because I think that's one of the ways.
It's going to happen.
Right.
Yeah, otherwise we're going to talk about it a lot.
Right.
What are you thinking, Laurie? What's your thoughts?
It would be nice if we could get something done before mid-year. That way, again, maybe it's like a light evaluation, but at least get us started in what that looks like, what our whole responsibilities are, make sure we are following through with those kinds of things. We will be pending the district goals because we're still working on that mid-year strategy. But so.
So I'm just going to ask you a question. Do you want to do this before November?
Literally what I was about to ask as well.
I think whether, no matter the results of what is going to happen in November, I think it would still be nice to have something in place. There's a lot of experience at the table. So again, I think we benefit from that. So I would say we should try to at least talk about it before that and see if we can get something ready. That'd be my opinion.
Right, so sometime in October.
Mm-hmm. I don't, and I was going to ask if we're going to be doing anything as far as setting up time to go over the results so far, what we talked about as provision or exposed goals, setting the new.
We can push it back a little bit because of all the business that we had to work with during the school year. So we're probably about a month behind your schedule.
Okay, so nothing?
Not yet. I need to talk to Patty.
So we have right now a strategic plan work session on November 18th prior to the board meeting. Are we not going to be doing that?
Yeah, that, I believe, was canceled.
Do we want to flip that in place of it? Since we already had that, I mean, I had that on my calendar still. I didn't realize.
I do, too.
You what?
We all have it on there, I think.
Would that be acceptable? Tom?
So we're talking in October?
November 18th. We already have, we had a work session scheduled?
Yeah, I'm with you. And that would, it sounds good.
So 6:00 PM on the 18th, we'll just change the topic instead of strategic planning? That was easy. Look at that, Laurie. Well, it took you like a year.
Thank you.
All right, great. Is there anything else for old business, then? Let me go backwards real quick. I'm sorry. Is there anything specifically in here that you want to make sure that we have completed prior to this meeting?
No, so when I look at the general generic self-evaluation, I think there's probably some really good things in there for us to take a look at, like, are we interacting with the community? Are we interacting with staff? Those things are in there, I think, are important. I didn't see that there was anything, I guess, look at this and kind of have your opinion of, will these work? Will these not work? Here's why. What should we add? Sounds good?
Okay.
All right, well, then that takes us to new business. Has anyone got anything?
No.
All right, then that moves us on to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. I'm sorry, I should have pulled this into my phone already. Dr. Bassett sent me some information. Yeah, the only thing we have for the first thing up is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. There will be a, was there a meeting today?
No, there was a, he had to put together our plan and annual plan submitted to the state.
Okay.
It was due today.
Okay, so the only thing I said then, we're going to be meeting at the beginning of October in our new school store that is almost finished. So that is it for business advisory. Curriculum programming, boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay, curriculum programming on September 28th. We had a meeting, and we discussed some senior programming coming up next year in business, healthcare, and manufacturing. It's all going to be covered by grants, hopefully. And it's just informative statements. Our welding lab that we completed is doing a great job. The kids are loving it. The, even the kids from the other school systems, Perry, for example, are loving being here. And we're still waiting for our reimbursement of a grant that we got for that. So those are all good things. Crossroad staffing is an issue of concern, and we're looking at possibly working outside that one contract and bringing in other groups to help get us covered throughout the district. So we're working on that and looking at signature health as maybe a backup to help us out, cover some of the responsibilities for the mental health part of policies from the state to provide services. That's part of COVID.
Is that because of, because Crossroads can't get enough staff to cover the contract?
The counseling is the shortage of staff.
Yeah.
They're having a difficult time fulfilling the contract and services provided. There's a lot of schools all in the area that are doing the same thing, and they're just spread thin.
We also discussed the Mathematical Modeling Reasoning Pilot Program, MMR for short. There's about 40 kids involved in it, and it's a kind of a substitute for Algebra II. And we're tracking the kids with regards to performance, and we're throwing in the Algebra I kids, I think it is. So that way, we can see what kind of progress they're all making. And Tom, anything else? Dad?
I don't think so. Just in case somebody is listening in and they don't know the background, one of the things that we as a board had wanted to do was to create more opportunities for students who are not necessarily going to college. And so the welding lab is a step in that direction, and there's a consortium of other schools in Lake County where there are skill sets that can be learned that don't necessarily require a college background. So I, to me, I just echo what Mr. Miley said. I'm very excited about this, and I'm really glad that we have been able to execute that and getting the accolades from other districts really, you know, it's a step in the right direction, right? It really is something that we've added to the curriculum here. As we continue to look for other options, I think that's good as well. But that's all I need to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Laurie covered the booster meeting for me. I was out of town, so Laurie?
Yep, so the RPTA met on July 21st. I think it's their first meeting in a year and a half.
It's been a while.
It was the longest RPTA meeting ever.
Since I think I was the chair of the RPTA. So it's been a while.
Who chose it, then?
Jen from Baja. And I'm drawing a blank right now on her last name. I apologize. But so a lot of good discussion between each of the PTOs and PTAs about the preschool and how we can help fund the preschool with activities, supplies, different things. And everybody came to some great decisions on how each school will help out with that. So give a lot of kudos to the PTOs and PTAs for working together to make sure our preschools are taken care of. Each of the schools provided an update on all the activities that are going on, things from food trucks, Halloween dance, membership drives, walk-a-thons, just a whole list of things. You know, trying to find things they can do outside, keep the kids busy, and at the same time, help them fill a part of the school again after losing a lot of those activities last year. So all of them are very busy and hard at work.
That's our report.
Thank you very much.
My committee.
All right, buildings and grounds operations, alumni, Mr. Heck.
Sure. So buildings and grounds, we had a meeting as well. And, you know, over time, if you've been to the football games, you've heard our speakers have not really been adequate at the field. So we've gotten new speakers, and we're making some other updates as well, trying to ensure that we, you know, have a speaker system that is equivalent to the great field that we have in place as well. So that's one thing that has happened.
That has happened, or is going to be, it's going to be solved yet?
The speakers are there. There are still other incremental things that we need to do to make it fully improved, I guess.
Gotcha.
And speaking of the field, we did have it cleaned and sanitized, and at this point, it's in good shape. As you may recall, when we put the field in place, we're hoping to get 10 to 12 years out of it. And a part of ensuring that the life cycle is that long is doing the maintenance. And so we had Vasco come in and do that maintenance to help us maintain the field. We're basically, we're set for winter. We have played kind of a round robin with the services for plowing, but we've got a contract in place, and we're hopeful that between their service and West Snow this year, that we'll be good to go. But that is, you know, so we're good there. The boilers will be checked out in the next week or two just to make sure that they're ready to fire up when the colder weather hits. And I mean, there are other, we discussed many other things, but I am not, you know, those are still, you know, minor things that are moving along. Mr. Miley, did I miss anything big?
Do we want to talk about the house?
So is that, is that something that we're ready to move forward on with the house, or do we need some more time?
I can mention it now, just to let you have a seat.
So right now, our maintenance department is fragmented. We have people at the campus. We have people over at Concord. We have people at other places. And we recently purchased the house next door. It was for sale, and it's, you know, completely surrounded by Riverside property. It only made sense that we purchased that for potential future development. But that house sits there, and, you know, my perspective is either we utilize it or we raise it. It should not sit vacant. And so the proposal was made to, at least while it's there, to have the maintenance folks have offices there. There, you probably put eight people at least into the building. It'd be occupied. There would be things going on, and it would help bring the maintenance department together because they would actually see each other on a regular basis. And I have a Navy background, and it's kind of like morning quarters, you know, making sure everybody is fully coordinated and on the same page moving forward. So that, that has been discussed. And after the meeting, we did take a tour of the building. And it certainly, it's, I had not been in there before. It was a, I guess, a boys' home, and there are literally eight bedrooms. It doesn't look very big, but there are eight bedrooms, and those, that would facilitate having offices.
And the basement, too, really has got those nice workshop areas and all that. It makes sense.
Who would be moving equipment and, or what, just offices?
So mostly the offices, but there are some equipment. I don't know, do you want to expand upon some of the equipment? I know there's like a key. You had mentioned some things I'm not sure I can pull out.
We could bring over the computer system for the keys and the fobs. Bring over the key cutter. We could put our wood shop in the basement. We can put some of the paints that we use for the diamonds, for striping, for the football field, soccer field, as well as other equipment and tools that we have that are just fractured throughout the district. We feel that we could also, we currently house one of the bays in the flats. That could be utilized more so by the athletic department and the training staff. So if we removed out of that, that would be more beneficial for us being in there.
Anyway, just trying to utilize the assets that we have while we have them and improve our operations from a buildings and grounds and maintenance perspective.
Is there a timeframe for that? Or is it just a possibility right now?
We did not discuss a timeframe, but, you know, unless we need to discuss it further. I did, when we talked, you know, we don't want to spend, you know, we want to spend nothing, basically, to do it. We want to bring people in and utilize the space that exists. I think that maybe we need to do a little more research on what it would cost, but it should be done in this.
I've always found that if you leave a building vacant, it deteriorates quickly. It'd be better if it's there, at least for the time being, until we know what we're going to do with it. Like Mr. Heck said, the company was bought for development. We're not sure where that is going yet. But having them over there would also free up some space here for a few of our sites to work. So it's something we should consider.
That's great, I agree.
Yeah, so I guess I'd make the, just the proposal, maybe we should have done it at Buildings and Grounds, but we did want to talk it, talk about it in front of the board, is put together a game plan, a timeline, and then whatever expenses might be incurred in moving the equipment over. And, you know, there probably would have to be some IT updates, you know, so that people have connectivity and things like that. So if we could get a, you know, assessment of that, you know, say by the end of October, that would allow us to move forward. And if it can be done sooner than that, that would be great as well.
Mr. Mead, because it was maybe a boys' home, too, like sprinklers, things like that, like if that's all in there, probably at this point.
It's pretty much commercial.
Yeah, it's real interesting. So the guy lived there after it was a boys' home, but it is very much a.
It's a commercial environment. So I'd ask the question as well. Can we operate things in the basement? The answer was yes, because it was really built to commercial specs.
Okay, it's all like shelving down there. There's a lot of storage space. It's nice. And it's great, yeah.
And I did not, I need to catch up with the alumni association to find out what's going on. So I'm looking at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to policy and strategic plan. Mrs. Kadeski.
So policy, we do have a meeting with Neola on October 26th. And then that policy will be brought to the policy committee to review and edit if anything is needed. So there'll be more to come on that strategic plan. We just mentioned we need to reschedule a meeting, so, and get things back on top with that. So we'll see what we need to do to get us back into that mode.
I have a question. So will we need a policy meeting in November? Like, do we want to have a first read on policy at our November board reading meeting?
That would be the goal.
What's that?
That would be the goal. Yeah.
So we can put it on as first read in November, but we need actually have the policy meeting probably in December, after the first read, right? That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We can talk offline about dates if I may.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
All right. That takes us on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kales.
And I did not, I need to catch up with the alumni association
to find out what's going on. So I'm looking at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to policy and strategic plan. Mrs. Kadeski.
So policy, we do have a meeting with Neola on October 26th. And then that policy will be brought to the policy committee to review and edit if anything is needed. So there'll be more to come on that strategic plan. We just mentioned we need to reschedule a meeting, so, and get things back on top with that. So we'll see what we need to do to get us back into that mode.
I have a question. So will we need a policy meeting in November? Like, do we want to have a first read on policy at our November board reading meeting?
That would be the goal.
What's that?
That would be the goal. Yeah.
So we can put it on as first read in November, but we need actually have the policy meeting probably in December, after the first read, right? That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We can talk offline about dates if I may.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
All right. That takes us on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kales.
We're going to forward an update on our COVID situation. What you see in this slide are the total number of COVID, identified COVID cases at the beginning of the school year, which started on August 26th. The second slide also shows the COVID 90 positive cases. The bar graph depicts the number in each day that we were in session. The trend seems to suggest spikes on the first school day of the week. This may account for a delay in reporting on weekends. In other words, an individual may be aware of a COVID case on a Saturday or Sunday and not reporting it to us until Monday. If you look on this particular screen, Tuesday, September 7th was the day after Labor Day. We didn't have any school on that Monday. September 13th was a Monday, and also September 27th. This particular slide shows the quarantine numbers. They too peaked in the beginning of the school week, with the exception of Thursday, September 2nd, which seemed to be an outlier. But you notice that most of them again start to peak at the beginning of the week. Again, Monday, August 30th, it peaked Tuesday after Labor Day, Monday, the 13th, and then Monday, the 20th. There's a lot of questions posed to us that, okay, there's so many absences in the district. How many absences are related to COVID? Well, if they're reported to us, and we know that they exist, we can account for them. It's not always that accurate. Sometimes people keep kids home without, they have COVID, they don't report it to the schools. But these are the numbers of the last week. Riverside Campus on, for example, on September 23rd had 98 absences, and we could tell that there were 25 that were related to COVID. If you look at, and I want to point this out, on September 27th, it's the middle chart, you're going to see that Riverside Campus had the absences of 459. This isn't related to, it's not large like that because we had a health issue. It's my understanding that it was senior skip day.
Yes.
It was the Monday after, after the dance, and they decided to skip that day.
I was informed of that on late Sunday night by my senior.
But out of those 459, you know that 18 were COVID-related. This is just a bar graph depicting that. The orange part should be in the same column as the blue. I don't know how to do that. I need to learn. But that shows you the difference between the absences and the COVID absences. This is interesting. We pulled some information that I presented back on September 16th and looked at the numbers today. So we're basically looking at numbers that were reported on the 16th and how it has changed up to September 30th. Now, the percentage of students that have been identified as having COVID and staff members, it's not going to go down, right? It's only going to increase, because once you have it, you can't, you're going to count it. Back on the 16th, we had 2.5%. We have 3.1% now. The difference between the number of cases is a difference between 109 on the 16th and 134 as of September 30th. Now, that's, you know, 25 cases. We also pulled information that we could find from other Lake County districts. They're all represented here except for Port Harbor. We could not find Port Harbor's numbers. But if you look at the difference between the positive cases on the 16th and the positive cases on the 13th, there's going to be growth. And for us, it was 0.6%, okay? Now, to compare that with other Lake County schools, men that have masks increased 0.7%. So they actually had more COVID cases percentage-wise than we did, being masked. Willoughby Eastlake has increased by 1%. Pageville City is lower than us at 0.4%. They're mask required. Perry Schools are not mask required, and they are 0.9%. They have 1,485 students in their district. So the difference between what I reported on the 16th and the 30th is about 13, slightly higher proportionately than we are, but pretty close. Wickliffe increased by 0.8, and they had masks since day one. Madison switched the masks last week. They were 0.6%. And then Kirkland is low at 0.3%. They switched the masks on September 1st. There was another question that was asked of us is, well, with as many quarantined students as we have, how many of those quarantined students developed symptoms? And we tried to pull some numbers, and Mr. Carabine was able to, was able to pull those numbers for us. Did you want to?
From what I could tell, it's 16 students. And basically, how I was able to come up with that is our district nurse has a spreadsheet that basically compiles any information that has to do with COVID, not necessarily COVID-positive cases, but anyone who calls in who is considered a close contact or anyone who calls in that's getting tested, may not necessarily be positive. But it's about 800 rows on there. And I was able to detect that 16 students were initially recommended to quarantine and then tested positive within the next week or so.
So it doesn't, it doesn't possible they weren't necessarily symptomatic? We don't know if they were symptomatic?
I don't know those answers, no.
And what is, what was the population, the total population the 16 came from?
Like which schools?
No. So what was the total number of students who were quarantined?
Well, we've had 295 total quarantines this year and 135 total positive cases.
Okay. Terrific, thank you.
All right. We'll continue to update the board. We know as much as we have on meetings. And we also have the dashboard where we post this information where it's readily available when anyone out in the community wants to see it. The welding lab update. Mr. Miley mentioned it early, and so did Mr. Heck. Just wanted to highlight a little bit of the welding lab. We were talking about it and bits and pieces throughout the last few months. And I wanted to put it up here so everyone out in the community will know what it's all about. So in past discussions, it's been our desire to offer more classes, more pathways for our students at Riverside. And not just offer traditional types of classes, but classes that are also going to engage students that might not want to go to college, but will have a skill when they come out of Riverside where they can be gainfully employed. So we formed a consortium with other schools, which included Menner, Perry, and Wickliffe. And we applied for a grant during the spring of 2020. The grant's name, I just put it on here. The title of it is State of Innovation Workforce Incentive Program Implementation Grant. Okay? One grant was well worth applying for it. We didn't hear whether or not it was awarded. I guess it was supposed to be awarded in June of 2020. It didn't happen. We went ahead and committed to providing a better space in our welding lab. And we spent around $515,000 to do that. The classes started the second semester of 2021. But the district received notice that we are going to be awarded $445,000 for that lab, which if my math is straight, $70,000, that's just out of the coffers of our PI level. So we're getting a $515,000 welding lab for seven grand. So we're very happy about it. I also put on here that only 60% of our students applying at Auburn Career Center are accepted. And that's not a knock on Auburn. It's on the contrary. A lot of kids would like to go to Auburn. It's a great opportunity. They just can't take all the kids that want to go there. So what we thought in the future considerations is maybe providing more offerings, more pathways for our students, which may include healthcare and advanced manufacturing and business. Right now, Perry is offering construction. Menner is offering EMT and advanced manufacturing. And Painesville City is offering HVAC. And I think they're also offering how to drive forklifts too, right?
Yeah, Paul's under the advanced manufacturing. Yes, Painesville City has already said if we start the advanced manufacturing campaign, we can go over and do some more.
So we're very happy. Anytime you go down to the welding lab.
That shows that we charge back.
There's 13 welding stalls. And anytime you go down, there's probably three or four that somebody's in there doing something. And there is a different vibe down there than what we had before with the old equipment that we had. It is amazing to see the transformation that's occurring in that space. Couple other good things. We have homecoming parade, as you can see here, that occurred on Thursday, September 23rd. This is our king and queen, Michael Keller and Kingsley Seifried. Beautiful night to have them crowned. We also moved our homecoming dance outside. We were concerned about having as many students that bought tickets inside the field house for a dance. We sold over 1,000 tickets. It gets pretty sweaty in there. We didn't want everyone inside. It was recommended by the health department to have bigger activities like this outside. So we turned it around in about a week period to offer a dance floor outside. They still use the indoor, they use the field house for refreshments and be able to sit with tables being spread out. But the kids loved it from what I understand. I've heard a lot about how fun it was.
Yeah, I mean, two of my three, two of my three kids were there and said it was amazing. And like my oldest is fairly antisocial and he said it was the absolute greatest.
There was a dance last Friday too.
There was reports that we were able to hear the music. So I heard you could hear like the bass miles away.
Yeah, we faced the direction of the Lake County home just because of that reason. But here's the kids, a little bit of.
So great.
We have another, a couple more interesting stories I wanted to bring to the board to talk to you. I don't know how many of you are aware that one of our science teachers' sisters was on the, she was a pilot on the SpaceX Inspiration 4 rocket that went up into space for three years. And she asked for some time off and found out about it. And we gave her professional time because we thought she would be able to bring back some of her experience as being the sister of somebody who went up in space. And it's amazing that she's actually been, our teacher has been interviewed by Channel 8 as well. But these are a couple of facts. It's the first space flight featured a crew of private citizens. Her sister, Dr. Proctor, became the first African-American woman to pilot a spacecraft. And she's a geology professor at South Mountain Community College in Arizona. And like I said, Mrs. Salins, is the older sister, I hope she doesn't mind me saying that. But she has been teaching at Riverside for many years. And it's just great. They circled the Earth, orbited the Earth for three days. They left on the 15th, came back on the 18th. And they did it also to raise awareness and funds for St. Jude's and to begin, quote, "a new era for human spaceflight and exploration." Couple of the other experiences she had, other than the actual liftoff, was she had the ability to go on the Bonnet Comet. And we'll show you that in just a moment. I'm not sure what that little blue thing floating around is, apart from the camera. I think this video is like last three minutes long, so I'm going to cut it short.
That would be the coolest thing for her to see.
Right.
Like that just had to be so surreal.
Mrs. Salins, our teacher, is in the right picture, the one all the way up to the top of the ceiling of that plane, the roof of that plane. Now, it's my understanding that there were, I think, four people on that flight floor, civilian astronauts, and they were able to pick eight people to go on the, what they call the Bonnet Comet. So here's a part of that video. Robin told me that out of the eight people that were invited on her sister's behalf, three of them got sick and she was one of them.
How long were they in there?
I don't know.
That'd be great, have it for a party.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. All right, so this is another thing I wanted to mention in the board. It's unrelated to instruction, but it's just kind of an interesting story. We got a letter. And in the letter, it was, I'm trying to explain this. They had an old postcard of a Painesville High School back in 2015. It was dubbed, you know, New School. And it's a hobby of this gentleman that he buys these things and then he gets them back to the right place, you know? So over 100 years ago, it was mailed over to California. He bought it in a shop and he mailed it back. And in the letter, he mentions that I paid $6 for it. If you want to send $7 or $8 or $9, that would be great. Debbie and I were looking at this, my administrative assistant. We thought this has got to be a scam. Then we started looking into it and it wasn't a scam. This guy has been covered in media, through a lot of media outlets, of finding these cards and finding trinkets and getting them back to where they're supposed to be. So the card is actually stamped 1915, has a picture of the new high school, Painesville, Ohio. I called over to Josh Engel, who's the superintendent at Painesville City. I corresponded with him and also the former superintendent there, Mike Hamlin. And Mike Hamlin confirmed that this was the first high school. They've had two since then. But I'm going to get this card back to Painesville City. And this is what the gentleman said, if I could read it real quickly. It says, "Good morning. I was at an antique store and found this circa 1915 picture card showing your beautiful school of that era. I'm thinking you might enjoy seeing it. However, how we ever got out to California, we'll never know. And anyway, I hope it brightens your day. The card itself is an old-time classic. I said to myself, quote, 'By golly, I think I'll send it home where it can be appreciated,' end quote. Our heritage is important to all of us. Lots of changes, I suppose. At large, if posted up, it will create some nice conversation. Well, I gave $6 for it, so if you want it for $7 or $8, that'd be okay with me. Throw in a little postage if you want to, and sure, I enjoy souvenirs. My wife used to laugh at me and say, 'If you hear from them, you'll have to take me to lunch.' On June 26th, I celebrated my 93rd birthday. I have to say, I don't know where all the time went, but thankfully, I'm still going strong as far as I know. By the way, I like to call my little hobby a redistribution of happiness. Our world needs more of it. And here's wishing you and your staff a happy productive year and a relaxed Labor Day." That's the card, front and back. That's the gentleman right there, 93 years old. He's an assistant living in Stockton. To show our appreciation to him, I worked with Mr. Carabine. We put together a little box to send home. And I also paid $10 for that card, for my own money.
So his wife owes him.
For some reason, I figured you would.
I did.
Right, so now his wife owes him lunch?
What's that?
His wife owes him lunch?
Well, he said she used to. I'm not sure if she's still with us. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Carabine.
So a couple of weeks ago, we got an email from a woman at Q104 and asked us if we would be interested in being featured as our High School of the Week, which of course, we were excited about that. So today, Mr. Liatos and Coach Boers, and we got about 20 students from around campus. They did a, they recorded a Zoom interview with the Jeremiah Show, which airs Monday through Friday, I think 5:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. And they did a bunch, it was about an hour long today. They did, they talked to each student. Each student got to say their name, talk about Riverside High School for a couple of seconds and talk about, you know, being the High School of the Week. All of those are going to air at some point on Q104 next week. And then the interview with Mr. Liatos, I believe, will be Monday morning.
I believe so too.
Monday morning on the Jeremiah Show. And then the interview with Coach Boers will be Friday during the Jeremiah Show. I didn't give us the exact times, but our kids were really excited to be featured. It was pretty cool.
And Mr. Carabine, I'll report out because on the other hand, our weekly superintendent being in that time period, I wasn't able to attend it. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us next to the Treasurers Report and Committee Update. First would be Finance, Audit, and Personnel Legislative, Mrs. Grassi.
Sure, so we had a facility, or a finance meeting, yeah, I'll try again. A finance meeting at 8:00 a.m. on the 23rd. We talked about a number of the items that are on our agenda here. We discussed the OFCC updates to our facility plan that is on our agenda tonight.
We have a bunch of data next off. I'll go over that.
Because we don't have the data yet. Okay, so we were waiting for information from the OFCC and they have to submit that so that we can move forward with our facility plan. So that will obviously then be on our next agenda. We talked about the Essar funding transfers that we had discussed previously about moving funds over to the PI fund. And we have on the agenda this evening, 1.6.
1.65.
1.65 to move over. Again, that, the thought process behind that was to take the funding that we got from the Essar funds, from COVID funding, from the federal government, and be able to utilize that in creative ways to offset some of the things that we already have going on in our district, plus some additional things that we had for COVID-related funding. But then we would take those dollars and that we would move them over to the PI fund for the purpose of setting them aside for future needs for the district just in case we, if we go to the ballot, we might be able to offset some of those dollars and reduce our bond millage level by utilizing some of these funds that we're going to move over. And then we are also probably going to move additional funding later from the Essar 2 and 3 funds. So that's the plan. And even if we don't go forward with facilities or if it were to fail, for example, we still have needs that we have and we would be able to reassess at that time. So we're considering setting those things aside for that. So that's really good planning for us. At the end of the day, that does reduce millage levels for individuals if we do decide to go for a Bonnet Comet. So that's important to do. So we talked about some of the other grants that we had received and I just wanted to mention again, I'm going to go over to skip a couple of things in the agenda here, that we talked about some of these grant monies that we're receiving. And again, I just want to congratulate the district on the $444,585 that we're getting for the welding lab. That's a really, really great accomplishment for us. So that's really great. And then the last thing we talked about, we had two things. We talked about our appropriations that are on the agenda and because of some of the things that are still up in the air with funding with the state of Ohio, for example, the open enrollment dollars and how those things are going to work with our five-year forecast and whatnot. So appropriations may change, but we're putting together the, permanent appropriations are being made tonight because we have the deadline to do that. And then if we need changes later, we can always make revisions to that. And then the last thing we talked about was bond financing. And I don't know, you said you had a meeting set up with Mike Purcella to discuss some of that. So I'll let you.
Essentially, there was, you know, we had talked about possible refinancing of our bonds, but the volatility of the market, you know, takes us time to be able to do that and getting our ratings updated, movies. And it seems like, you know, rates keep trending down and then all of a sudden, one or two days pops right back up again and that opportunity goes away. So right now, we're back on hold again and just waiting to see if the market comes back, if it generates savings, if it makes any sense to do that. Or if not, then we'll just wait for the future.
Other than that, that was the extent of our meeting. I have nothing else.
Okay, then that takes us to the update from the Treasurers. Ms. Placa.
Okay, just had a couple of quick updates tonight. Wanted to give an update on Discovery Tours. It's been a while since we've heard about Discovery Tours. They are the touring company that had a business back in, was it 2019 or 2018? I can't even remember at this point. It's been so long, our charter was canceled. And the, so the bankruptcy court process is hopefully going to be finalized soon. As expected, there'll be pennies on the dollar in the bank as, so we filed what's called a proof of claim for $83,000, which is what we pretty much the district incurred because of that company going out of business. I guess in total, $2,642,000 in claims were filed against Discovery Tours and their available cash balance is $78,993. So if you do the math, that's, you know, our best case, we'll get back probably about $2,400 at best case, assuming there's not other expenses that come out of that from the bankruptcy court.
One point of clarification, it was canceled with Discovery, but the board still made, allowed the students to go. We still made a gap.
And the following year, you know, then COVID happened and that trip got canceled.
The following year it went, because my daughter was the first year that Mr. Breach had done that entire trip on his own and the next year.
And that Friday when he returned, that was a little long. Questions to try.
Yeah, no, Discovery Tours is the seventh grade trip.
No, I know. I thought you meant a trip that occurred right before the closure of the.
That was a different one, but yeah.
We did that one too.
We did.
And then the criminal trial is still ongoing against Joseph Chippelletti, who was the vice president, who is facing federal embezzlement charges because he was funneling money out of the company, which is how they got in this situation. So that's still continuing. Next item on my list is we had the garage sale at Leroy Elementary School back on September 18th. We brought in just under $3,000 that day from selling, you know, old student desks and filing cabinets and chairs and things like that. We had a pickup day on the following Monday and actually someone had come back and grabbed a few extra items. So it was, it put us over the $3,000 mark from that sale. We're exploring, possibly doing an online auction for the remaining items for those who were able to make it. There's still like, you know, bulk quantities of chairs and some tables over there that could be sold. Next item on my list is regarding EMIS coordinator services. We have a contract with Lake Geogee Computer Association for EMIS services. And the individual that handles our EMIS data reporting is leaving and going to another school district. So at this time, we are, you know, we're still under contract with LGCA. They're still supposed to provide the services, but we are considering exploring bringing our own person in-house. So we are going to kind of dust, wipe the dust off the old job description, update it and kind of see, put it out there and see what kind of cans we can get to finally bring it back in-house. You know, with a district of our size, it probably makes sense to have that. And now with the updated school funding formula being phased in, having someone on site and, you know, might help us have more accurate data. Not that our existing data is inaccurate, but just having that person that's here on campus that understands Riverside's data and not doing multiple districts. So we're exploring that. We'll also look at other options as far as if there's other ways. We also reached out with possibly doing a shared service in another district, but, you know, we might be leaning towards just having our own dedicated person in-house for that. Next update's on the state funding formula. The state just announced today, so the Highland Department of Education was expecting to have a new formula finalized for our fiscal year, which actually started on July 1st. Here we are in September. They just have it figured out by October, about October 13th, which was to see the first, for the first time with the true calculations of our state funding. That's been delayed to December. So we will be halfway through this fiscal year before we actually even know our true funding from the state, though updated. Though updated, and if we're owed money, they'll, they'll pay us that. There's a guarantee in place that you don't lose money, so there's not a fear of state funding going down. Net state funding per se, not, not, because the way the new funding is, you know, there's no longer the deductions for charter schools and community schools, STEM schools, and open enrollment deductions, which we report as an expense on our books. So we'll actually see our revenue go down, but we'll see our expenses go down by even more, resulting in a, in a net gain. So that would change our five-year forecast as well, it changes our appropriations, but not being able to see those calculations, it's, it's, it's the best of the estimate at this point, how that will truly pan out. Because on tonight's agenda is the appropriations, which is essentially our annual budget. And it's kind of funny because the budget's based on a three-year history. If you look at the three-year history, we had eighteen nineteen was the last year that had Hale, Leroy, Masson were open. So like, we weren't doing repairs, we knew the new schools were under construction. Then in nineteen twenty was the opening of the two new schools. We didn't know how utility, you know, would look like, because we never operated before. Students were redistricted, how to use up those budgets for individual buildings. Then, you know, the later part of nineteen twenty is when COVID hit, and they closed us down for the rest of the school year. We didn't make payment on certain contracts, like they're saying, or security, you know, travel was, was ended, and things like that. And then twenty twenty-one was the COVID year with twenty-seven percent of our kids online, not having travel, not having field trips, those things. So, now we're in twenty-one, twenty-two, what are we going to do state funding? We don't know exactly what the charter school deduction, buy STEM schools, things like that. So, there is no good baseline for, for, to have a true accurate budget, so I'd expect that we maybe, maybe, may need to make adjustments throughout the year. Plus, with, you know, we, we approved some of the, the new grants for the American Rescue Plan for IDEA, early childhood, there's also homeless grant, there's the welding lab grant, and the, there's another grant that we applied through, through E-Rate called the Emergency Connectivity Fund for Chromebooks. That all stuff is up in the air, so those aren't, those haven't been appropriated with our budget, so if those things, once they're awarded, we'll have to make adjustments to appropriate those funds. But we didn't know what fund number, and how that's all going to work yet, so we might put it into the current budget being approved tonight. So we'll definitely have updates in the next couple of months as well. Also on the agenda is a transfer of five thousand dollars to the Beaver Nation School Store, which we talked about earlier, that new course that we're going to offer. So we're just doing a transfer of five thousand dollars to set that up. And as we talked before, the OFCC documents are supposed to be on tonight's agenda to approve an updated master plan, essentially just updating cost figures with our plan with the state for phase two of the facilities plan. The OFCC found some errors in the documents, they were getting ready to send us, and said, no, we're not going to have it to you by tonight. So, they will send it to us in, in the coming weeks, and we will have that on our agenda next month, on the twenty-eighth, at the next meeting. We dropped that deadline to sign the documents, it's in the state's the twenty-ninth. So we were right in under, under, under that deadline, otherwise we would have had scheduled a special meeting. But if by chance we do have a special meeting, we will, we will put it on earlier agenda this, so we're not up against the deadline. And if you recall, you know, we updated it two years ago, it was actually, it was September of nineteen is the last time we approved an updated plan. Doesn't mean we're moving forward per se, it just gets us lined up, and then at a later time, make that decision if, if we want the ballot.
Do they have any estimation when those are going to be ready?
I would imagine the next week, I would think. But you know how the state is, sometimes they, you know, we've been talking about this for, for months, and they knew this is the deadline, and then they had it on this meeting's agenda, and that didn't happen, so. But they will, they're working on it, we should have it next week or two, and I'm sure we'll review it at the finance and availability grounds meeting, we can review it as well at that time. Also, in the buildings and grounds section on tonight's agenda, there's a approval for, to go out for bus bids for five special needs buses. You know, we already purchased ten school buses this year, because we have that two-hundred-thousand-dollar bus grant, we, we purchased ten regular buses. We are looking at using some of our American Rescue Plan dollars, that's for special education, to purchase three of these buses. We really would need five, so we figure we could just get bids on five, we don't have to buy five. We'll make that decision at a later time, but finds will, it's both the option while we're at it. And the last thing is, on tonight's agenda, after the public comment section, there's a public hearing on the American Rescue Plan. We're not quite sure if we had to do this or not. If you remember with the ESSR funding, we had to put out for community input, take that into consideration. It's a little unclear if we have to do that for the other American Rescue Plans for special ed, early childhood, and for homeless funding. So we have that on tonight, if, if there's any input on spending those funds, but, you know, it's one of those things where there's a lot of restrictions with those funds and how you utilize them, so you have to be careful, you know, if you do receive input, and you do factor in making sure it's something that's allowable under the, under the grant line, grant, grant guidelines, which can be quite complex. We're still waiting on exact guidance on what the, all that is, this, this just came out in the last week or two, and it's, you know. For ESSR funding, they had all kinds of trainings and presentations, and this funding is kind of like, here, we have special ed funding for you. It's like, okay, we'll, we'll get to use those on, what are the restrictions? So we're still working through those challenges.
Those are federal passive funds, right?
They're federal funds, yes. From the same federal packages, like the fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollar stimulus checks that went out for Marjorie Abel this year, it was all part of that same, that same rescue plan. And I believe that completes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes.
My name is Mary Sarah, I live here on Riverside Drive. I, Mr. Miley may remember, may or may not remember issuing me some corrective measures. It works, because I am a mostly well-rounded individual.
I remember you, too.
Yeah, all right. Something you wouldn't remember, if yours were more severe. Anyways, I would like to say, I know the last two meetings were heated, this school year has been much better for my daughter Madeline over at LaMoo. It's been better for her, it's been better for us, we've been happy. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the board, it's been great. Additionally, I'm really interested in this welding lab. I, I know that we don't typically have a back and forth here, but have you guys reached out to any, well, let me preface it by saying, I know some local manufacturers that have expressed interest in me about exactly what you guys are talking about, so I was wondering if you guys had done any of that, or if maybe I should email Mr. Miley, or Mr. Hack seemed to be interested in it, or.
Email Dr. Malacher.
That would be me.
Oh, you, okay.
Yes, Melissa, Melissa Dodd-Malacher, I'm the Director of Curriculum. Please do. We are working through AWT to build some of this new programming, you know, the consortium of manufacturers in the area. But we also are looking for some smaller, maybe local businesses.
I've had two, I've had two industrial customers, one in Madder and one in Uq, but.
I would love that.
Yeah.
I would love that, so yes, please, you can find my email addresses on the website, like I said, Melissa Dodd-Malacher, Riverside Schools.
Okay.
Director of Curriculum.
I think it's a fantastic idea. When I went to Riverside, I really wanted to go to trade school, and Mr. Dar was a great guy, but he was less than receptive to that, because he wanted to go to college. So I went to neither college nor trade school, but Mr. Miley's corrective measures really paid off.
I want to say, see, you don't stay an eighth grader forever.
In my defense, I was a child at the time.
The funny thing is, both Mr. Miley and I are both well-rounded, too.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Please, please do.
I will.
I would like that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes. My name is Greg Hamilton, I'm a parent, I have two children in the Buckeye Schools. One of my students is in the fifth grade classes, and I know earlier this week, some content was discussed in class that did not follow proper procedures about notifying parents, notifying the board, and my wife and I did get an email from, from the school district apologizing that the procedures weren't followed, but I really did want to talk to you guys and, and really address the seriousness about it. And not only that, but the, that, to make sure that, that policy is, is followed and protocols are followed with, with this, with all of the staff. And more importantly, you know, when, when difficult topics are brought up, to maybe have some discussion on what the procedure, when students bring up difficult topics in class, what is the procedure? What is the standard, you know, operating procedure for the, the teachers to say, you know, hey, this is a topic, it's not a part of our curriculum, talk to your parents about this, this is something that you should discuss at home with your family? Or is this something that should be discussed in classroom? In particular, this one was transgenderism, which happened to, also happened before the maturity talk, which is supposed to be coming in later this year for the fifth graders. The, 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 the way that the, the teachers and the, and the staff at Buckeye handled it was essentially to just go ahead and address the topic using content in favor of that particular topic, which I find to be somewhat inappropriate. It would be akin to if a student came into class and was asking about heroin, and so we read a children's book called Johnny Lost His Needles. It would be very inappropriate, and, and not the proper way to, to discuss the topic, and I'd, I'd like that to be considered as something to, to look at as far as educating the educators on how to better take care of our kids. Thank you very much.
Shaila Linden, same topic. My daughters and his son's class were, they're same class. I talked to my daughter about it, asked her if, because it says in the thing saying somebody brought it up, asking the question, she said, nobody in my class brought it up. So, if none of the students brought up, and just the teachers decided to do this, that's completely wrong, and she needs reprimanded, some, you know, leave or something for a week or so, so she could think about what she did.
Daniel Novy. I, I live in Pinksville as well, and I wanted to address the same topic. You know, I, I received the email and read through it, and it seemed like it was handled, at least this email that went to the, the teachers was, seemed like it handled well. And then I went and I watched a reading of that book, and as this gentleman had mentioned, it was very, very inappropriate, one-sided, and just not at all in the realm of appropriateness. And I think, I don't know who approved it, I mean, it says that it was brought to the principal, I'm not, I don't know the principal, I don't know about him, he might be in this room, I don't know. And so I don't even know if the principal saw it, you know, but I would think that if it was viewed, it would have been understood that it was something that would be absolutely better handled at home. I love the idea of educating the teachers, and how do they respond if somebody raises their hand and asks, you know, a question about something that is not a part of the curriculum, something that should be addressed at home? How do we respond to that student? I think that's, that is a wonderful suggestion. I don't know, maybe it's been addressed before. This is the second time that I've been made aware of a topic like this being addressed in the classroom that was not approved through the curriculum, didn't go through the proper channels. The first school was Melridge last year in second grade, and then this time in fifth grade in Buckeye, I believe it is. And, you know, it's, it's a very serious topic that I think needs to just be handled with gravity, so it doesn't happen again. I mean, that's in one calendar year, two times. And I don't know a ton of people, I've only been in the community for five years, working, three years living, and that's the second time that I've, I don't have a huge, you know, group of people that I know here, and, and so if that's happened twice just in my, you know, circle of friends or influence, it's, it's probably an issue. Thank you.
So I'm Brett Bench, Dr. Brett Bench. I've spoken a couple of times at the school board meetings. I'd like to thank the board for considering things like the, the welding lab and, and helping students look at vocational applications or vocational careers outside of college, because I think that's a place where we're really lacking in this country currently. We, we have a shortage of people that are in the skilled trades, and you can see that because you're having a hard time getting goods, you know, even for school lunches, you're having a hard time, you know, with manufacturing facilities, getting goods and things like that. So I, I think that's very good, and I, I think we need to continue to do more of that. Not everyone needs to go to the university, not everyone needs to get a PhD, not everyone needs to get a bachelor's degree. I have been very troubled, though, by some of the apparent things that have been said in some of the previous school board meetings, not, not by the, the board necessarily, but just by the community in general. I have heard a lot of people saying some very non-scientific things, and it really troubles me, because I have people that are trying to explain science to a, a person that lives and breathes science, and they're, they're just wrong. And it bothers me greatly. I, I will say that vaccines do work, I'm going to say that masks work. There's a lot of evidence that shows this. There are a lot of people that say they don't, that's their choice, okay? They have to live with the consequences. I will point out that polio is gone, and smallpox is gone. That's because of a vaccine program. I also see a lot of people are getting their information from places where it isn't really verifiable. So, people are getting news from things like Facebook, social media, ninety-nine percent of that crap is just wrong. And people don't have the wherewithal to be able to understand that when I read this, I need to actually think about whether or not this is true or not. People are only getting the information that they agree with, and it's designed to enrage them, it's designed to get them to click more, and someone's making money from this. And the problem is, the community at large isn't aware, or they don't care. We have school board members that are focused more on political ambitions than working with our kids, making sure they get a good education. That's not right. We shouldn't have school board members reading the Declaration of Independence or the Constitution like they're screaming for a John Wayne movement. That's not the purpose of the school board. The school board is here to help our kids get an education, and make sure the grounds and everything with the school is, is taken care of. I, I'm somewhat troubled, because I recently got a flyer from my school saying the hood, hand, foot, and mouth, mouth, whatever it is, hand, foot, and mouth disease is spreading around, and it's encouraging that we need to wash our hands more. And, you know, we need to do all these different things to make sure that our kids don't, you know, get hand, foot, mouth disease, and make sure that we don't spread it. And we want people to report it. I, I guess I, I struggle with this, because the school board doesn't take COVID seriously, but they want us to take hand, foot, and mouth disease seriously. People aren't reporting COVID cases. We see on social media where parents are saying, oh, Johnny's sick, but I'm not going to tell the school board, or tell the school, because I don't want them to be quarantined. And then we're looking at quarantine numbers, and we're saying, well, you know, only sixteen people got sick. Well, how many of those people that were quarantined actually got tested? Some of those people might have been sick and not had symptoms. And we need to look at this seriously, we need to look at the numbers seriously, and we need to think critically about what we're saying. So, you know, I, I guess we can fight hand, foot, and mouth disease, because it hasn't chosen political party yet. I mean, come on, let, let's get real.
Good evening, my name's John Champ. I'm here to speak in support of Ms. Tenny and her decision to read the book, When Aiden Becomes a Brother, to her fifth grade class, and my daughter is also in that class as well. We all know teachers have a responsibility to educate students, and by no means should they use that platform to force their political or religious beliefs on their classes. I don't think that is the case here, I don't think that's what Mrs. Tenny was doing. You know, our teachers are confronted on a daily basis with these real-life situations. It's not little political statistics sitting in the classroom in front of them. They're children who have thoughts, fears, and questions, and emotions, and, and sometimes they experience them all in ten seconds. And it's part of the job of the teacher to help them learn how to deal with those emotions. And I'm sure there's many people, myself included, who say that's, that's the parent's job to deal with that. I agree wholeheartedly. But as a, a teacher of twenty-one years myself, I can tell you, that is definitely But as a, a teacher of twenty-one years myself, I can tell you, that is definitely part of the job. I've also found the best way to do that is to create a safe classroom where kids, all kids feel welcome and free to be themselves for the most part. I think it's really easy to look at, at this decision and second guess it. It's easy to sit at home and say, you know, I don't want to have to deal with this yet, I don't want my kids to have to deal with this situation yet or this decision. And the truth is, they're dealing with it. They, they, they know about it whether we want them to or not. The deci, the decision we have is, do we provide them with guidance or do we let them figure it out on their own? And I think, I think the decision is to provide them with guidance. I'm sure there are many kids in the class that had questions. You, you run into a situation where one day, you know, you're calling your classmate one name and all of a sudden you're supposed to call him another name. That's, that's very confusing. If it were my classroom, I would want to provide my students with the vocabulary or the knowledge to, to process the situation or to, I guess, articulate it in a, a sensitive, constructive way. I certainly wouldn't want them to figure it out on the playground with all their buddies, which is the alternative. And I guess from my understanding of the situation, I think that's precisely what Miss Tenny was trying to do. I think she was trying to help the kids have the, the knowledge and vocabulary to try and deal with the situation. Whatever the outcome of all this is, I, I, the, these types of things are not going away. They're becoming more and more prevalent and the way that, I guess, whatever, like I said, whatever comes of it, the, our kids are watching us to figure out how to respond to it. And they're learning one way or another. So like I said, these aren't going away and I think, I think Miss Tenny, I support her decision one hundred percent and I think as a school board, you guys should as well. Thank you.
I would like, I, I always respond to some of the parents that have some of that issue. I, I received obviously a lot of calls over the last few days over, over the book. It was an isolated incident, it only occurred at Buckeye. If for anything out of this event, it had us scrutinized how we go about looking at more sensitive, more controversial topics, especially when you have younger children. This topic may not have been such a big deal, maybe even at the high school level in the, maybe a psychology class or something like that, but when it's fifth, fifth grade, you know, parents have a right to know what's being taught in the classrooms and we, we understand that. Obviously, by the time we heard about it, it was water under the bridge, so to speak. It's something that we couldn't turn back, but at least it got us talking about not being complacent. What processes do we go through when some of these things are brought to our attention? And we did have a discussion where every single principal in our district sent notice to every teacher in our district about what the protocol is. And that protocol is, if there's something that you're teaching should be attached to the standards, state standards, should be part of our local curriculum. And if something is even remotely seems to be sensitive, it needs to be age-appropriate and you're not sure, talk to one of the administrators and one of the administrators in that building should contact central office and we discuss, discuss it further. It's not even so much the content that was read. To me, it was the process, right? It was something that we didn't even, we didn't vet, we didn't look at it before we did, we, before we read it. And that's the, the part that needed correction. We do apologize to the parents that were upset about it, but like I said, it's not an excuse, but when you have two hundred and sixty teachers, every once in a while, something like this happens. It just, it does. And it's not something that we want to have happen, but it's something that is almost a learning experience for us moving forward, that we get our own house in order so, you know, it doesn't happen again. And I can't sit here and tell you it's never gonna happen again, it probably will, you know, somewhere along the line. But at this point, I sent out a memo as well to the teachers and I, I also insisted on sending a memo to the parents. I don't want parents learning about this online or from a neighbor. They needed to know. We want, want to be as transparent as possible and that's why we sent out the notice to the parents. Basically, what we have in there is what happened and nothing more, nothing less. I know that might have created a little bit more conversation with you and your children at home and I know that's the type, type of topic that parents would like to take care of and talk about, or more so than just presenting it to a, a class without even, even further discussion after reading the book. So hopefully, people know to, to contact central office before they, before they read something like that.
Thank you. All right, that takes us next to, what do you call this? Public hearing for American Rescue Plan. The Riverside Local School District has been allocated additional funds through the American Rescue Plan enacted on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The additional funds are restricted to IDEA A Part B Special Education, IDEA A Early Childhood Special Education and to support homeless children and youth. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit input from the public on how to use these funds and a comment made today or received in the future will be considered in utilizing these funds. All right, if not, that will take us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit is first.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit. Consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through P. A second. Thank you, Mr. Miley. Is there any other discussion on these agenda items? I will read the, and send a thank you to, for our donations from the Leori Thompson, VFW Coast, seventy-nine thirty-nine auxiliary core antibacterial wipes, hand sanitizer and personal protective equipment. And again, I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that we are accepting the grant resolutions and accepting grants in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars for the American Rescue Plan for those ideas, special education funds. Fifteen thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-six cents for the American Rescue Plan for ECSE funds. Twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents from the American Rescue Plan for homeless funds and four hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Innovative Workforce Incentive Program Grant, which is the welding lab. So that's, that's a good sizable chunk of dollars on, on the agenda that we're approving. So. Is there any other discussion? Can we call the roll on the finance?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harder?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do you want us to separate out, my husband's volunteer basketball coaching or do I, I'll just abstain from it?
It's, it's separated out, it's separate.
It is separate, okay.
Oh, it is, okay.
I think it might have included the first direction of the board, but we took it out this afternoon, separated it.
Have I given that one? Sorry.
You've got this one.
Never mind.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, items A through F.
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those? Can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harder?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Yeah, so sorry, I thought that was completely.
It, it, when you original.
It's not at the very bottom.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we have, we also have an agenda item on, 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 to, to approve special supplemental contract for basketball for Jean Harden, volunteer, forty-seventh grade coach.
Second.
There's a special on that. And then can we call the roll?
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harder?
Same. Motion carried. Curriculum and programming?
Yes, a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, A through C.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
What do we do about the agreements that we did not receive? So is rebounders and wrestling did not send them back?
Yeah, we'll continue to follow up with them, to get those in place. Sometimes we, you know, officers change and we might have a wrong email and not know that, you know, as the deadline goes by and we get, you know, we have to figure out who the, might need a new officer, we follow up with them.
If, if you don't mind, I'd like to read these, the names of these ops, just so that people really understand the, the names of the groups and, and all the groups that we actually have, that are really made up of parents and, and other folks in this district that contribute to a great degree to what we offer here at our schools. So we have Parkside Elementary PTO, the Lamu, the Hamsco PTO, Riverview Elementary PTO, the Melridge Elementary PTO, the Buckeye Elementary PTA. And support organizations, we have the Riverside Band Boosters, Riverside Boys Soccer Club, Riverside Girls Soccer Boosters, Riverside Slash Club, RLEF, Riverside Girls Lacrosse, the RBI Club, Riverside Boys Lacrosse, the Courtside Club, Riverside Volleyball Boosters, Riverside Choir Boosters, the RHS, RHS Gridiron, the Riverside Flying Air Booster Club. And we also have the Riverside Feather Boosters, which isn't active any longer, and a couple others that have not submitted. So, so it's just a great deal, great deal of parents that get involved in those organizations and I'd like to thank them.
Anything else? Okay, roll please.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harder?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, Buildings and Grounds operation?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds consent agenda, items A and B, as recommended by the superintendent. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Presley. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harder?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Board of Education update, has anyone got anything additional?
I just want to thank Stacy Lucas, high school teacher, for the quick turnaround on homecoming. She did just an amazing job, doesn't get that lost in time. I've, I've heard more good things about that than I can tell.
I don't know how she does it.
I, I don't even, know either, but kids want it that way, I believe.
She is, she is such an asset for our district and she serves unbelievable.
If that is it, our next meeting, we've got a finance and audit personnel, October twenty-first, eight AM, then our special meeting, or our regular meeting is October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-two PM, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Hack, call the roll, please.
Jennifer Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harder?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Laura Kinski?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all.